Six o'clock. Open up our meeting. Everybody's here. We are being recorded by Area 58. And if you would join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. First thing on our agenda is appointment with Mike Martin and Bob Valerie for the Hemlock landfill repair. It's options, I guess.
Good evening. My name is Mike Martin. I'm a senior program manager with TRC. I've been working with, I've been working at the land, on the landfill since around 2008 with my, started with my previous firm doing the monitoring, which is still currently doing the monitoring. And then I switched over to TRC 2023. Around 2021 or so, I noticed some additional erosion during the monitoring, which has gotten a lot worse, especially with that one summer, I think it was 2022 with the rain, which just was this absolutely crazy and it just started washing the side slope away pretty, pretty horribly. So tonight we're going to talk about what kind of work we've done out there to date, a little bit of the history of the landfill, go over some of the damages that we're seeing at the landfill, the two options that we have contemplated to fix the damage out there, based on those options, what the next steps looks like, and then open it up for discussions. So to date, last February, we completed a drone survey, which was used to create an existing condition plan. It was also, secondly, was used to create a surface topography, so we could start, you know, get new contours of the landfill, because we didn't have any existing survey information. With that information, we developed a conceptual plan for a repair. We developed some cost estimates associated with that conceptual design. Following discussions with the town, we reached out to Mass DEP to present the initial concept to get their input. Based on some of the initial input, they wanted to know what these wetlands limits were relative to kind of the proposed corrective actions that were taken. So we did complete a wetland survey in June. In July, following that information, Mass DEP came out, did a site walk with us to kind of review the site. Unfortunately, at that time, the Japanese knot, we had just taken over everything. So, you know, it was very limited on what we could see as far as the damage was, what kind of damages out there. Following that meeting, DEP submitted their request for information, which we prepared a response for in September. We had a follow-up meeting in November. And more recently, I met, I talked to Mark Dakers on, yesterday actually, to go over, kind of get an update on where DEP stands on the proposed corrective action that we presented. And so, DEP's still kind of evaluating the proposal themselves. They're probably gonna, Mark is probably gonna schedule a site visit to walk the landfill with me and Bob, just so you know, Mark Dakers is a section chief for solid waste in the Southeast Region Office. So, you know, he's the ultimate decision maker on how to move that forward. We're hoping, probably, I'm guessing, maybe end of January, beginning of February, to hopefully have Mark come out of sight and kind of see the landfill itself and, you know, what we're proposing to do and what needs to be done. So, a quick history, the landfill operated, it started in 1930, like most landfills in Mass, started as an open burn dump. And then eventually, because of air quality issues, they switched to just landfilling municipal solid waste from the 70s, and ultimately closed in 1977. In the 2006, 2007 timeframe, under an administrative consent order from the state, they capped the landfill, so it's, you know, to make it the condition you see today. And then in 2008 was the first time erosion was identified at the landfill on the side slope. That picture on the right, you can see is one of the washouts on the side slope that has, on the west side, that goes down into the wetlands. And essentially what they did was they stripped back the material, put it in a bedding layer, and then a bunch of riprap with some check dams. During that 2008, this is a snippet from a report that Ron Caldwell did, this, you know, that identified the wetlands and some of what was contributing to that. And some of it was, you know, the stormwater runoff overtopping the swale locations along the landfill. That is still occurring today, and that's what's causing continued maintenance issues of the side slope. And that's, you know, one of the concepts that Bob and I were talking about, is how can we do a repair? You know, one repair to fix the whole problem rather than doing some patchwork, like every five to 10 years, just doing like a little patchwork repair work, because, you know, that's gonna be, you know, it's either a big project, or it's death by a thousand cuts, and it's all, you know, gonna cost you the same, and just spread out over a much longer duration. So this is, you know, the drone survey that we completed back in February. You can see in this area, like here, you can see this is like the culvert there where it's eroding. This is an area where it's, the whole swale is undermined and is still going, getting washed away. This was the, this area and this area were two previous washouts. So you can just see as, you know, these patchworks get done, it's just moving, 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 moving further down to where the drainage swale is. You know, so, you know, we know that we can do an easy temporary fix, it's a lot cheaper, but it's gonna continue to happen, because we're not addressing the overall problem. And here are some of the pictures, you can see, this is the culvert that comes out. Let me go back. So this is where this culvert right here is, that, you're gonna see the next picture, but you can see this culvert, it's kind of buried, it's filled with soil and sediment from the runoff from the parking lot. Here's the erosion where the entire upper portion of the cap is gone, and this is the, what they call the impermeable layer, the flexible membrane liner. So your top two feet of material is completely washed out. All the stone is from the swale that collapsed. And here, you can see where this is like the geofabric for the swale itself, and that's completely undermined in this area. And then one of the issues we see also is, this is a perimeter swale that's supposed to be pitched to a detention basin that's located way down here. That swale had, it has settled, so it's not flowing. The stormwater, there's no pitch to that swale anymore. So when, when stormwater, when it rains, there's no pitch to get it to where the basin is, it just hits it and goes over top. And it's a steep slope, and that's why we're continuing to see that erosion occur over time. Okay, so, the options that we have, this is the, you know, two options. The first option is a limited repair. That would be those two erosion areas, kind of stripping back the materials down to the geomembrane liner, rebuilding part of the swale that's collapsed, putting down, you know, six-inch drainage layer bedding material, and then, you know, kind of redoing the riprap hatch. And that way, they'll provide that temporary stabilization, they will eliminate erosion in those specific areas. The cost associated with this is on the $40,000 range. You know, some of it will be depending on inflation for materials and labor. Some of this could also be if the highway department could do the work, that could help reduce costs, if, you know, if they have the availability. So, but, you know, if you're assuming an outside comp vendor's gonna come in to do the work, it's on the order of about $40,000. The problem is, is, you know, as I mentioned, that it doesn't address the underlying concern of what's causing this. So, you know, there's a high likelihood that this problem is gonna just be persistent over the years. And, you know, every single time it happens, you're looking at a $30,000 to $50,000, or $40,000 to $50,000 repair bill, you know, in today's dollars. Obviously, as you go down in 10 years, that's gonna be more. So, you know, that's, you know, option one that we're looking at. And this is option two, that we, the concept we developed, where, you know, we're gonna, you know, proposing to rebuild the entire side slope. And then, you know, to offset those costs, and also to look at the town's, look at increasing the footprint of solar, we would propose to regrade a portion of the cap landfill and extend that field. There's a little bit of a bowl down here, at this southern end of the landfill, there's a depression where you have some leaf and yard waste and so forth. We would also fill that area in to raise the grade, to match the existing thing here. So you'd have a platform at this elevation all the way down to here. And then we'd also do some minimal regrading potentially on this area, too, to get stormwater from not flowing, you know, when it flows, to not have it flow into Hemlock Lane, but to kind of capture it with a burn and redirect it onto the site. So we would try to eliminate any stormwater from this portion of the landfill going out to Hemlock Lane during heavy rain events. That's what, you know, so that concept would be looking at bringing in about 96,000 yards of clean fill. We'd charge the town, charge a tipping fee, to, you know, to bring that material in to offset the landfill repair costs. And we'll just go with that now. And what this option allows us to do is do a bunch of different BMPs. It would allow us to kind of create some burns around the perimeter in the parking lot, where, you know, to help kind of prevent sediment from the parking lot to get into these culverts into the swale, so the swale would stay cleaner and require less maintenance. It would allow us to do overall BMPs across the side of again, just to reduce the sediment transport into the swales, which is causing some of these issues. It would allow us to rebuild the swale, so we can actually get the pitch that we need to, to get the flow, to take the stress off the side slope. It would also, one of the issues that, I'm gonna go back to a couple slides here. One of the issues we have is how the landfill is constructed right now, is this primitive, this riprap swale goes all the way down. So there's no easy way to get maintenance equipment to do the required mowing. So, under this concept, we would be able to look at providing access, so you can maintain the side slope going forward, so you can mow it, you can get all the tree growth that's on it right now that needs to come up, you can, you know, minimize that potential going forward. You'd have a larger basin down here, you'd be able to control that. And the other benefit would be, you get to really expand the footprint of solar out here, so you could have over a megawatt system, which would also increase revenue for the town from a renewable energy standpoint. So, you know, serves up three or four different goals. Now, as you can see, the cost to do this, based on engineering design, construction oversight, you know, getting a contract to do this, adding a contingency, is about $1.2 million. Out of this, we could generate, you know, in the $1.1 million range to pay for it all, and then it would, you know, out of pocket, it would be about $100,000 for the town. That being said, I talked with Mark yesterday, what the big cost driver on the construction is, there's a bunch of Japanese knot weed that needs to be mitigated. And I assume that it has to be disposed of, like excavated up and disposed of. Mark said, you know, we can look at doing pesticide applications, you know, so I think it's about $400,000 to dispose of the Japanese knot weed at a landfill. If we did pesticide application, that's probably coming down to $40,000. So I didn't have the time to update those finances, but if you take, you know, this $865,000 would be cut in half. If you do that, you could, you know, start looking at a revenue surplus for the town of about $200,000. So, you know, it could be a very beneficial project, if you can import clean fill, charge a tipping fee, and then, you know, have a couple of long-term solution that fixes this problem once and for all, so that you don't have to deal with this. I think, you know, Bob and I were talking about how often has the erosion occurred? It's anywhere between four to 10 years, we're seeing the erosion happening. Really depends on the rain. Like we have the summer, like the summer of 2022 all over again, it's gonna get really bad really quickly. And even with the temporary patch, it's just gonna move it to the next spot and just wash up the next spot. So, you know, some of it's weather dependent, you know, with climate change, you're expecting these crazy storms, and you get too much of the rain in an hour, you know, that's a real problem that we're looking at. And another good thing, too, is when we did the design, it's, you know, we were cognizant about the problem, you know, you have residents here, you know, and having a lot of soil come in with truck traffic. When we designed this, there's an access road down in here, so we would be accessing the landfill directly off of 106 down here, by the water tank, and come up through that backside. And we would not even, we would not even have to put a truck down Hemlock Lane.
Where's the access point off of 106?
It's almost gated, it's across from the Brockton store.
Yes.
I didn't think that was actually a road, though.
Before the church, I mean.
It's an access, it's an existing access road.
You can drive in it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the trucks would be fine on that road?
Yeah, I mean, we'd probably build it up a little bit, put down some dent grid or something, you know, just to, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't take a lot of prep work, because it's already an existing access road. I think it's utilized right now to bring it in there.
The highway trucks use it.
Yeah, to bring all the downed limbs and everything else, there's a lot of wood storage back there.
And the prep work for that would be included in the cost?
Yes.
And the wood storage that the highway department is currently using down there, Marlins Landing will accept us to just leave it on site. So we figure out what, you know, what we wanna do and how everything goes on.
And things like that, you know.
Should not disturb highway department operations and...
And the residents.
Not possibly, and the residents will cost us anything for it.
Yeah. And when we, we developed this concept, too, we met with the highway department and said, you know, when we develop these, say, this fill and what you have in storage, like set aside what you need for storage, so we can, you know, work, you know, we worked that into the concepts, so we know that you need this much space for storage, okay, well, set aside this much space for you. And so, so we have done some preliminary coordination with the highway department already. So depending on which route it goes, you know, option, you know, depending on what the town would like to do, you know, this lays out the options. If we wanna go with option one, we would let Mass DEP know that we would just proceed with a temporary fix for now, we'd do the minimal permitting. You can see that schedule's probably fairly quick, that can happen. The other thing, the option two, is if we wanna do the long-term repair, probably overall in 18 months, it'd probably take another two months negotiating with, with Mass DEP to, you know, finalize the details of the fill concept in the longer, in the bigger repair concept. And then, once you get into construction, you're talking about a six to eight month construction period to allow for all the filling and grading and so forth of the site. So that's kind of like, that's kind of the big, you know, two options that we're looking at, you know, as an overview. And with that, I would open it up to any questions. I can go back to any slide if you, you know.
I had just a couple, and I should know the answer to this, but why do we get, why can we, how is it we can charge the, the construction company to bring soil in for a government project?
Under Mass, you know, the Mass DEP back in 2013 and then in 2015, they issued some soil policies. So in the Greater Boston area and some other big transportation projects, they have a lot of excess construction soils out there that contractors have to get rid of. So usually, when the contractor's to go to get rid of it, they pay a fee. So they have these facilities now that take this clean soil, and they'll charge a nominal fee, depending on the level of contamination. So for a clean fill, you can get anywhere from $10 to $20 per ton of soil that comes in, because these generators are looking to get rid of it, and, you know, they need to get a home. So, you know, this is one of the homes that they could, so there's a lot of little projects like this, where we set up an importation, and then allows, you know, if we can charge a generator of soil, $10 to get rid of it. And, you know, there's a lot of them out there that will pay. I represent a lot of those types of generators that will pay to get rid of material.
So this is a, a fee not set by the town, but by the state?
It would be a fee set by the town, but it's some of it's market-driven. You know, it's really what can you get at the time, how much soil's available at the time, you know.
Our contract with the contractor would specify every ton, you're gonna pay us so much money.
Exactly, yeah. And when I did these costs here, you can see like revenue from the soil in for, what I assumed is like, a lot of times, you know, that assumes, like, the net revenue of that is probably a lot higher, but, you know, it's usually like, I assume that the contractor's gonna get paid $4 a ton to place the material, and then the proceeds would go to the town. The rest of the proceeds would go to the town. So, you know, if you can negotiate, yeah, with the contractor saying, we wanna hold, you know, we're gonna, you wanna charge 12 bucks a ton, then let, you know, then you could do that in the contract.
And how does he make money, then? If he, if we're balancing out the...
The money's, the money's gonna be, he's, the money he gets is, if it's $12 a ton, he'll get $3 to $4 a ton for the placement cost to pay for all the, you know, the pay for, pay for him. The rest of the revenue, you know, is designed to go to the town to pay for the repair.
I see.
So, I mean, a lot of these soil projects, you know, when they do them, they're talking millions a yard, so there's millions and millions of dollars of profit. This isn't one of those projects. Like, I'm sure you're familiar with the Marlins Landing project, where, you know, they're taking a lot of soil in there, that, you know, because of the volume they have, there's a lot more profit here. This is a relatively small volume overall, in the grand scheme of things.
The contractor would be happy to pay us to take this extra soil?
The generators would be, the contractor would be. The generators, yes, they, absolutely. I represent a lot of generators, and, yeah, they, they, 10, 12, 15, 20 bucks a ton, they'll pay to get rid of materials. I represent a client out in Central Mass in Grafton, and DOT for that giant I-90, 495 interchange rebuild, they were paying $20 a ton to get rid of clean soil at a facility. So, you know, there is a lot of this material out there in the marketplace.
Do we need to do an upfront part of the contract? What would our cash upfront be? Do we have to get a million-dollar bond, or?
No, I think, no, no, because, I mean, some of it, the engineering costs upfront, I think, are probably on the $50,000 to $60,000 ranges to pay for the, you know, initial engineering design work and permitting work, you need a wetlands permit, you would need to do the solid waste permitting stuff, there might be some other, you need to do a construction general permit for stormwater. And then, once you kind of have those front costs, you know, then all the construction costs would be paid by the proceeds of the soil.
So, there's, the way we would have to do it, we need to, would need to investigate. Because the way Mass General Law works is you can't just use money that comes in for a specific purpose, unless it's already been allocated for a specific purpose, like a revolving fund. So we would need to work a way to make it work. We may have to appropriate the funds upfront, and then whatever proceeds we received would kind of make up for those funds, but we would likely have to make some sort of appropriation, because you, the way the Mass General Law works, you can't just use the money that comes in for a specific purpose.
Okay, I don't have any other questions, Tom, or John?
Well, I had a quick one. So, yeah, I agree, we wanna make sure that the water, you know, doesn't run off into wetlands and into people's properties, because it's a former site. What kind of soil would we be bringing in?
What we, this is soil, what you call it, S1 soil, so it meets the residential risk criteria, so it's just, you know, it's typically consistent with what Mass DE, Mass DEP has a document called Natural Background of Metals, and what they call polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. Those are basically, pH is what you, it's petroleum things that you find in asphalt, is the easiest way to describe it. But they have a natural, they have these natural concentrations. They would be things that are consistent with what you naturally find in the environment. A little bit higher than that, but consistent with that, but protective of residential, protective of drinking water.
We're not looking at any sort of contaminated soil or anything like that?
No.
Okay, all right. And then, and I, I understand you guys have put a lot of work into coming up with the plan, and I don't mean any offense at this at all. I do like option two, but is there any sort of like timeline warranty, or, because I'm sure when they designed the original plan, they thought it was going to work, right?
Yeah.
So, so how, I don't wanna be a pessimist, but how do we know we're not back here in 10 years doing this again? Is there anything to, to insulate us a little bit?
I think when we look at, when we put bid, if we went up to bid for contractors, we could probably put language in the specs to do that, to provide that warranty. And I think also, you know, one of the things that they looked at when they designed this, they didn't necessarily, their stormwater model wasn't all encompassing. So I think when we look at that, we do updated stormmodel modeling, runoff and what's going into the landfill, what potentially could be sediment transport into the landfill, you know, we're gonna take that into account, to, you know, address those problems that necessarily weren't addressed in the initial design. And then the other thing, too, would be, you know, providing a way to do maintenance. I mean, one of the hard parts is you, you can't get...
Get around the side of it.
You can't get equipment in there. So if you have a way to do maintenance, and you say, okay, because if you, three to one side slope, you're gonna sometimes get erosion, it's gonna happen. But if you have a way to get maintenance in there, and you can just say, okay, well, instead of having this massive problem, all we need is a couple wheelbarrows full alone to kind of just fill in, you know, and throw some seed down, then that's a lot easier. I've done that at landfills, where, you know, they see some minor erosion, but they, you know, it's easily accessible, and they can just bring in, you know, a couple wheelbarrows full alone and seed, and reestablish vegetation, reestablish that vegetative support layer, and it, you know, is much easier to mitigate, then you're talking like $50.
Okay. And do you, it's water under the bridge now, but do you, was, excuse me, was lack of maintenance one of the reasons we got here now?
I think part of it is, I think part of it, like any landfill, when you have MSW, and you put weight on it with like, you know, and you have to cap it, and you're putting it down material, and you surcharge it with some weight, it's gonna lead to differential settlement. I mean, that's part of that aspect, too, as well.
Okay. That's all I have.
Yeah, it's difficult going last, because a couple of things I wanted to ask were already spoken about, but just a quick question. So if and when we go with option two, and there's an 18-month start to finish proposed, you know, timeline, when do we sign the contract? And what guarantees or what assurances do we have that the construction costs don't get worse if the summer is overly rainy and the concern of option one happens now?
Well, I think, you know, what we're proposing under option two is we're rebuilding the whole side slope. So even if you have more erosion, we're already rebuilding that whole side slope.
The cost wouldn't go up if it gets worse before the build, the rebuild happens?
No.
Okay. And then, just from an environmental standpoint, I understand we're talking about a landfill here, but from, from the perspective of the people who wanna preserve things the way they are, we're not taking, we, we, we're not re-navigating the whole scope of the area, we're rebuilding what's there. We're not taking away more than is there, correct?
Correct, yeah.
In other words, if this is the area, we're not digging here, here, and here to make a bigger area?
We're not digging anything, we're just, we're working within their footprint. And then, and then in this, in this area down here, we're raising the grade, where the bowl is, we're just bringing the grade up to Mass's grade. But we're not expanding the, you know, this footprint right here is holding strong, because, you know, you have all wetlands here, we can't, we can't expand the landfill.
And that's what I'm clarifying, we're not, we're not making, we're not clearing more than what's already cleared.
No, we're gonna, no.
We're revamping what's already out.
Yeah, the rebuild of the side slope's gonna match the, you know, the closure design grades.
And this Japanese knot weed that I've never heard of, is not a protected anything?
It's an invasive species, and it's a problem.
Just double checking, just double checking.
I've looked into that, and I didn't think you could kill it with pesticides. I thought you had to dig it out and then hopefully...
It takes a lot of applications, you know, they said that there has been success. When I talked to Mark, he said they use it at two landfills, it's above three to four applications, about, you know, $4,000 or so per application. You know, there's some other concerns, though, you're also spraying pesticides here next to the wetlands. I mean, so, you know, that's why right now I carry, assume that we're just getting rid of it.
This is, Tom, it's that bamboo, you see all of those now?
Yeah.
Oh, it rose so bad.
Yeah, it's crazy.
You can't get rid of it.
Nope. It is, yeah.
And how is the pesticide applied? Is that like a...
That, I'm sure, I mean, that is usually a licensed applicator. I think they have to inject it into the ground to kill the root system.
Okay, so this isn't something that comes from the sky, the residents would have to be...
No, this would be, I think, very targeted, into the ground to kill the, just those risers that go down.
Specific areas, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about Hemlock and the other neighboring, I'm just trying to make sure that we're covering bases there.
On that vein, Mike, are we looking at increasing elevation significantly at all?
This elevation probably goes up 15 feet right here, but it would just, it would be, mask this ridge elevation where the tree line is, it would mask this elevation kind of heading back towards the water tank. So the elevation rises, you can't really see it from the public sphere.
Okay. So they're not gonna look out their front yard and see a, you know, a four-story...
No. The only thing we're seeing, you know, here would be, in this area, we're maybe looking at building a stormwater burn, but like you'd have like maybe a three-foot mound right there along the roadway. But part of that, you know, part of that design was, if you put solar here, I would imagine if you're one of these residents, you don't wanna see a solar field, by raising that, you could then, you know, put a decorative...
Put something up.
You could put a decorative fence in, because one of the challenges, like I've done solar projects on these landfills, you only have about 18 inches of two feet of cover. So a lot of times when you have to build these security fences, they're on these giant concrete ballast foundations. You know, if you can put a decorative fence up, or plant some, you know, or plants, you know, or have a chain link fence with some armbidies, you know, then you take, you address any visual screening aspects that a solar project could create right there.
Isn't that bottom section the cemetery?
This is the cemetery, yes.
Yeah. Most of those, people don't complain.
Yeah, they're quiet.
And I don't, I don't think this matters at all, but just, just a quick question, note number four. Why is it, Jermaine, that it's a special flood area, flood hazard area? Does that, what does that have to do?
They have mapped the flood plain up into here. So we'd have to, that's part of the wetlands permitting, is we have to re-designate the flood plain, because it's showing the parking lot in the 100-year flood plain, which is, you would need, you know, probably 100 feet of rain to raise the swamp into the parking lot.[1693.02] I mean, that's, so it's FEMA that's just like they just do.
They redo their flood maps.
When they do their flood maps, they're not in the field really looking at things. It's just like, oh, this is what it could be, not taking into account the real elevations. Like we've mapped it before, we've mapped it during the rainy season and it just stayed right at the total slopes. But that would be part of the permitting process is to have to reclassify, re delineate the floodplain area itself.
What are the next steps if we decide to go with number two? First, before I ask you that question though, when do we have to make this decision?
It's really up to you guys. The thing is, we have.
That's why we're here tonight.
We have gone out to bid for solar at the board's request about a year ago. Town meeting approved the lease of this land for solar. We are in contract negotiations with a solar firm. Obviously, if you go with option two, we would let them know we need to delay the project because it's going to take us probably about two years to do that. If you went with option one, we would allow them to continue, but you can't move forward with option two once the solar is there.
Once the solar's on.
Once we put the solar there, you're not doing this scale of project with the solar there. But you know, the timeframe of 18 months doesn't start until we have the money to start the engineering.
And to that vein, some of the things that you could do too is, you know, when you negotiate with the solar person, instead of having to maybe allocate that, you know, if you have a lease agreement that's paying you whatever per lease and that's going to generate, let's say, $300,000, $400,000 over the lifespan, you could ask for that lease money upfront and then you have the allocation to go back and then you can use that lease area to do that. And this would also give you leverage to go back to the solar company and say, look, we have this project, it's a bigger area now, you're going to have a higher thing, you're going to have more generation and that could increase how much you could get pro-lease from the solar.
And the fix one, we'd have to do within a year. I mean, DEP is going to tell me, Bob, you know that you had the leak and you've had time to work on it? Either put a Band-Aid on or?
And they're going to make you also.
Have surgery.
And they'll also make you remove all the trees that are currently grown on the side slope as well. And that's going to add more cost.
Even on option one though, we still need $30,000 or $40,000?
Probably 50 if you say.
Do we have that somewhere?
No, we'll have to make a capital request and go to town meeting this May and hope that gets approved. Even the work of Mike was graciously funded by Maryland's Landing. They gave us a $20,000 donation, which has allowed us to hire Mike's firm to move forward with this engineering work.
All right. So it seems to me that we need to do some research first, like I don't know if it makes sense to have some sort of public input on this. It seems like it's going to be a big project and people might start squawking once they see things happen they didn't know was coming. We need to figure out financing on either option. When you say option two will address the underlying problem, the underlying problem is, you know, sentence what?
The erosion, correct?
It's the fact that you have too much stormwater that's creating this, overtopping the swale at various locations that is creating this. And you break here, the town, the town impacted the site-wide hydraulics by increasing the area of contributions to this stormwater thing. So we would, you know, that increased area of contribution that's causing this overtopping, we would address that by creating BMP such as regrade, you know, simple thing, regrade the parking lot, highway, back highway, the parking lot and pitch it away from the landfill. Those are simple, scrape soil, get these slopes that way and get stormwater away from it. Put in some perimeter berms that are, so if you have a lot of rain, you're not getting sediment into the swale so the swale starts getting clogged up, which is also contributing. You start losing capacity of how much water the swale can hold. And it would also then, you know, we would have to figure a way out, you know, we'd also fix the pitch of the swale. So if we go back to like this photo where the swale is a pitching and so this is leading to the constant overtopping, you would regrade that swale so you get it to pitch into a basin and get the water to flow into the basin rather than overtop the swale.
So essentially where it's all site work?
Yeah.
Essentially, and that means the grading is somehow wrong. Was the grading put in wrong in the first place or this is an event over time or?
I think it's probably, I think it's a few things. I think it's like they said, you know, they kind of, they didn't account for all the runoff from the parking lot, so there's more water going in there. There's probably some differential settlement because you're on top of MSW, which has some compressibility over the last 20 years that led to some of the settlement of the swale. With the swale, you know, how these are built, usually there's a, most of the landfills side slopes are three to one, but when you build a swale up, you have this like little thing, then it's two to one for a little bit and then it transitions to three to one. So you have this, on the backside, initial side of the slope, you have this really steep three to one slope. So that starts getting eaten away and then it just, once it starts getting, once that vegetation layer, vegetative support layer starts getting washed out and it just, it just goes.
And Jonathan, I think you mentioned about warranty. I believe the first repair, well before I was here, was only eight years after they first approved the construction.
We spent a lot.
And since I've been here, it had just recently been repaired and then we did another repair already, so.
Well, that's my thought.
It's not happening.
I don't want, I don't want to, I mean, if we go with option two and go, instead of kicking it down the road, we address it at its core, I want to make sure that the town, we're not right back here, you know, eight years down the road.
And that's why him and I have been working together, saying, do the banner to just do it right, do what wants and do it right going forward.
Yeah, just I actually, I walk that area all the time just because I need a minute out of work.
Right.
So I go down the hill, up the hill, around the landfill and I'm like, wow, this appears to be like the basic wasted area. Well, you know, what could be done with it? And of course, because I'm working at Maryland's Landing all the time, I said, is it possible? And that's what led us to today was, let's just throw it in front, you know.
Yeah.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained, but on the other point, you know, whichever, one way or another, from the Board of Health, you, we will have to fix that one repair as soon as possible.
And some of this is like, I'm assuming we have, we know kind of where this, like these extents are right here. You know, even if we fix this, I mean, this whole area right here that's likely going to erode or that we might have to include in the concept, I mean, we still, part of the scoping, once we walk the DEP, they're going to look at this and say, well, you know, if you just do a temporary thing, it might be bigger, you know, we might require you to do more reconstruction in here to kind of stabilize this area. So we're assuming it's a, you know, similar to this where we just throw down some rip rap and just like fill it up where the erosion is, they could require more. We haven't had, you know, we've been hoping, we've been kind of working more into the assumption right now, focusing on the concept two of the larger repair projects and haven't had those initial discussions with DEP on what a smaller repair would even require. We're just making an assumption on that as well.
I would say it would benefit us, the board, to take a tour with, at least with Bob and maybe Mike if he's available, to actually see what we're talking about. I know we also have quite, we've spent a lot of money on this over the years and I'm sure we have a big file on it somewhere.
Oh, yeah.
That would be helpful to take a look at just to see what we're talking about. I mean, I remember the controversy trying to get it capped in the first place and that was a big controversy. So it would benefit the board, I think, to get that background. And then we need to talk with Cody and whoever to figure out if we think that following the second option, that we figure out how we're going to pay for it, you know, how we're going to address paying for it, whether it's, if we have to come up with a million dollars upfront, that's going to be a challenge. If we don't, you know, like you said, if we have to do an evolving fund, I'm not sure how we're going to do that. So I'd like to know a lot more detail in there before I made a decision on it. Or at least, I mean, I think, I agree, I think we all seem to sense that trying to fix it is the best way to go, but I would like to make sure, just like Jonathan pointed out, that, you know, want to make sure we do it right in every way, so.
Yeah. No, I think you raised valid concerns and while I'm leaning again towards the second option here, we got to, we got to check out all aspects of it. Like you say, the financial, and I do think we should give residents a heads up, you know, they start seeing trucks coming in and maybe some sort of public hearing or something or.
And they're going to be involved regardless because once you do a con con file, you got to notify. They're going to be coming in, building that, getting that board beforehand would definitely be beneficial.
Yeah. We're going to have, if nothing else, when we get to town meeting at some point where we're looking for some kind of money, whether it's $30,000, $40,000 or whether it's a million dollars, I'm not sure what that's going to be, but we better have answers for it.
Can we do some sort of contingency with the solar contracts and let them know what we're thinking about and see if that's a possibility to front that?
Yeah, I can let them know, I can see what their thoughts are. And, you know, they might, like Mike said, it may expand their footprints, they might be interested. If it expands it a lot, we have to look at what, how much it expands it because if it does, we'd actually have to bid the project out because now it's a different scope, parcel and other bidders may be interested. But these are all things we can look into. We just wanted to get the tenor of the board before we start investing a lot of time and effort into one direction.
Well, it sounds to me like we have to do something. I think everyone agrees to that and it sounds to me like the wise way would be to try to fix it as opposed to just patching it, but I think, at least I feel, and I'm willing to, we want to make sure we don't feel like we really have a good handle on any of it.
No, the expectation wasn't for you to make a decision, so I, it was just to get the information.
My goal was to just allow you guys to be informed, the town to be informed in general that, you know, we have a problem, we can fix a problem or we can fix a problem and...
Can I make a suggestion then or I'll make it as a motion if you guys prefer, but give me?
One quick thing too, when you look at procurement, you know, there could be ways where, you know, maybe depending on the profit sharing, where you could do almost like a design build thing where the contractor would pay for it, you know, you put it up to bid with contractors as a design build, you know, it might cut in more to your profitability depending on what is out there, but that could be an avenue to look at as well.
Okay. So can we, I would say the first couple of steps to do are for us to get, maybe even Bob can provide it, I'm not sure, but some kind of a history, a summary of the landfill, like, you know, what work we've done on it, when it was done, how much, just so, and I know these guys don't know, I mean, I don't remember the details, but I remember the problems. So I'd like to get that and then I'd also like to have us take a tour relatively soon, I guess, unless it snows, I guess, but.
Is this the time of year to do it with all this vegetation down?
Right.
That's the, I don't.
I don't think the tour would be long, maybe an hour or so, but.
Not in this weather.
Yeah. But that would be my suggestion to the board. I don't know if you want me to do it in a motion or if you want it just go that way or if you disagree, whatever.
No, I agree. Tom, what do you think?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, so can we?
If Mike and Bob, if you want to send a few dates, times that you're available, I'll coordinate with the board and we'll get something for.
It'll have to be in the daylight.
Yeah.
Other times during the day, afternoon, early morning?
That time, it doesn't matter to me. Maybe come in or.
I just have daycare issues on Tuesdays and Friday afternoons.
Okay.
Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, anytime.
Monday, Wednesday.
Or Tuesday, Friday mornings. Mornings are great, whatever.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, just send me some options and I'll coordinate with the board and then Bob and I will put together historical documents against you guys as well.
I think, I think we should revisit that just because I know, I know it was a big controversy.
And if you would like, after this meeting, I can tell Mass EP, you know, kind of give them a quick update on where, you know, kind of the results of this meeting, some of the next steps, the town they're looking into and hopefully, you know, drive them to actually make a decision as well.
Keep them at bay.
Well, I mean, make a decision and kind of just say, you know, let's, and push in this direction. Because the more, the good thing is with most of these projects, when you go in front of the state, if you don't have public support, they don't care. If you can get, you know, you get the public support on, that's, you know, DEP is going to come along with you most of the time. So having that public support and starting with Cody and then starting with, then the Board of Selectmen and then as we move forward, you know, that's going to be critical to the success because even when you do the permitting process, I wouldn't be surprised if they put a permit out there with a public comment period, you know, to allow intervenors to kind of comment on this.
I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Sure.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for the update.
Thanks for your work, guys.
It's very helpful. Good presentation. Anybody else has any other questions?
No.
No, just kudos to Bob. Bob has been overseeing this whole thing and doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
He always does.
And also Marilyn McDonald, McDonald Industries, like I said, they donated the money for us to even be doing this. So if it weren't for them, we would have been going to town meeting in May just to start a disprocess.
Just to start this process.
We've already written her.
We did, we already wrote her a thank you letter, but just wanted to acknowledge.
And there might be an option there where she could be, you know, she might be willing to do some more gifting, you know, with that relationship. I know Marilyn quite well, but I know you don't want to abuse that relationship either.
She's been, they actually have been great to work with.
No, she's a wonderful woman.
Transparous.
Very. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
This is two.
So Mr. Giode, say it again?
Giode.
Giode, thank you. Sorry for the delay, although being interested in the Conservation Commission.
Yeah, right up your alley.
Very interested in you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, everybody.
So.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mike, yep. Thanks, Bob.
Just a quick comment on this. My prior employer, Tom Sharon, has done the exact same thing with their man, and they had great success with it. Still, I'm glad the man, though, who had problems with the soil, they have farm up there, and now it lives in his loving, he worked out very well.
Okay. So you want to, you're a retired firefighter, live on Eastmont Ponce Lane and want to, what's your interest in the Conservation Commission?
It starts with living on the lake and of course, you know, when I have 258 acres of water in my backyard, it raises some interest in that. But, you know, I've always been an outdoor person, hike all the time, I'm encouraged upon, you know, several times a week. But it's both that, my love for the outdoors and my concern for all the wetlands around here, as well as the fact that, you know, I haven't been a firefighter for 23 years and served the town. I understand that citizens have to participate in the town government. So as I looked at it, I said, well, what's the best place? Well, the Conservation Commission actually is kind of a good fit for me. Now, I have a lot of experience with it, but I recently joined the Ron Ponce Water Shed Association. I'm on the board as the executive secretary on the MWA and I thought this would be a good fit, you know, sort of dovetail together on both of them.
Okay, you're retired, so timing's not an issue for you in terms of meetings and whatever?
No, not a lot. I do a little childcare with a couple of grandkids. I've been working part-time at a social hospital as paramedic as well, but I haven't done a lot of hours there, so time is not an issue for me.
You know Tom Hall?
Who?
Tom Hall?
Ball? No, I do not, sir.
From Halifax? No?
Tom, I'm sorry, what's Tom's last name? Is it Ball?
Or over on?
Tom Hall. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he said Hall.
I'm sorry. After 15 years of.
Well, here you go, too. I really understand you.
You guys have a good conversation.
Tom's the boss of these.
Yeah, Tom's been there for a long time. So one of the things that the boards tried to do, especially with these technical committees like the Conservation or zoning or whatever, is try to get a lot of training involved because it's very, over the last years, it's gotten very complicated, very difficult. So you don't have any difficulty with, or having trouble with doing that?
Not at all. In fact, almost as soon as that, my government, Ron Ponce Water Shed Association, they've noticed that the Southern Windland, something or other was putting out, I think about stormwater training. It was a great program, but unfortunately it was put on by the University of Maine of Bangor for this area. Unfortunately, they had a lot of competition. Myself and Caitlin applied for it. Alan may have applied for it as well, but I know Caitlin and I got turned down. They were looking for, you know, kind of bigger organizations for the training because of the site, the number of people they could take was very limited. So, but I've already tried that. Caitlin has already appointed me to, it's the Conservation Commission like group in pointed me to, it's the Conservation Commission, like group in the, in the state that runs programs for training for exactly that. And as soon as you guys give me the okay, we're going to start hooking up with that training as well. So we're already on that.
Great. John?
You stole my training question. No, I love it. I think it's a great fit. I can tell you're civic minded, you know, and your experience with fire. You seem like you care about the outdoors. You seem like you're willing and able and hungry, so I'm excited to add you.
Thank you.
Yeah, same. I would just second those thoughts. Always nice to have somebody volunteer to want to do the right thing. Do you have any personal relationships with any existing members of the Conservation Committee? Any close personal ties?
I do not. The first time I met them was at the conference meeting.
Okay, all right. I would just add that, you know, I think you'd be a good addition. I would encourage independent thinking, which I think is important for any board or committee, commission. Some voices are louder than others, and I would just encourage you to stay the path and keep your own voice. But thank you for your interest, for sure.
You're welcome, sir.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time and the interest in doing it and doing a good job for us. That'd be great.
I'm going to try my best.
So I'll take the motion, if someone wants to make it.
Oh, I will gladly make the motion to appoint John.
Giode.
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 To our Conservation Commission. Does he have an expiration?
Yeah, June 30th, 2027.
Till June 30th, 2027.
I second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations. Welcome aboard. You will have to, well, Pam will get in touch with you. Do you have to go?
Yeah, I'll send you a letter, and I'm going to get your card down to the town clerk, and you're just going to get sworn in. But that will be in the letter.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks.
Thank you for your interest.
Appreciate it.
Sorry for the delay and getting you on this.
No problem. It's really interesting.
All right. So we can go back to the beginning here and do the warrants and commitments?
I move to firm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 57 for $130,766.86. Payroll warrant number 58 for $461,944.71. Vendor warrant number 59 for $251,934.82. Withholding warrant number 60 for $158,863.30. Ambulance commitments 12-9, 2024 through 12-15, 2024 for $83,030.60. Ambulance commitments 12-16, 2024 through 12-22, 2024 for $39,683.60. Ambulance commitments 12-23, 2024 through 12-29, 2024 for $48,936.20.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the following warrant and warrants and commitment. Vendor warrant number 61 for $350,737.52. School warrant number 62 for $99,182.67. And mobile home park fee number one for $5,160.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Going down Selectmen's Minutes from December 16th and 17th. I know Pam fixed the, the one with special town meeting, so we, it was a majority. I don't want the mistake in there, a majority. So do we have a motion to approve the December 16th?
I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen Minutes from December 16th, 2024, and December 17th, 2024.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Town administrator evaluation.
Yes. So it's hard to believe that coming up on another anniversary here in Halifax is part of my contract, subject to an annual evaluation by the board. The way that this is conducted, so we're in compliance with the old meeting law, is each member is sent individually an evaluation. The evaluation is based on the goals that the board has established annually. In addition, it has several other areas of evaluation that follow their productivity and thoroughness, communication and personal skills, leadership and managerial skills. What happens at that point is each member, as you know, sends me back their individual evaluation. I compile the scores into a master sheet, which you have in front of you tonight. So I, again, I appreciate all of your thoroughness through the evaluation. I think overall, out of a score of four, my average was a 3.87, which is very happy with. I appreciate the high marks.
I'll get you to most colleges.
You know, I, the only thing, I guess, the only area I would like to discuss, which again, still came in at 3.33, was the number four, which is improved communication and transparency with the public. You know, again, I think a 3.33 is a good score, but I want to make sure I'm doing the best that I can for Halifax. So, you know, I can only do as much as the board provides me with, and the information that the board provides me with. So I know over the past year, I've introduced Cody's Corner to help with transparency with the public. We have done website training with all of our departments, so that our departments are better utilizing the website. We have also started the monthly newsletter with our intern, Eva Chapman. We started the town administrators' update on every board meeting. But I certainly want to hear from you guys on what you think we can do to better improve that. Because that's, that's kind of what I took, is that there's a need for improvement there. So there's ideas. I know one of the things I had mentioned early on when I started here was YouTube, live Youtubing, Board of Selectmen meetings. There wasn't necessarily an appetite for that then. But again, I'm open to it, but I just, where it's the category where at the lowest score, again, 3.33 out of four still is a good score in my opinion. But again, I want to make sure I'm striving to do what I can. So I kind of welcome everyone's feedback on that category in particular.
And do we have any suggestions, comments?
Yeah, I mean, I can, I'll jump in. I'll start. You know, I don't think you're doing a poor job. And I don't think it's necessarily anything you can specifically control either. You know, so number four, communication and transparency. I kind of separated those out. I don't think the transparency is even on the table. I don't think there's any room for improvement there. I think your communication is excellent there. I think it's clear to see what we're trying to do and how we're getting there. I just think there exists some sort of mistrust between the public and the four of us in general. I don't think it has to do with you, or any of the three of us individually, but I think the Board of Selectmen and the TA get lumped in, and I think there's a disconnect somehow. And I don't think it's a transparency issue. I don't think it's for lack of effort. In my comments, I did mention things like Cody's Corner and so forth. I just think that we might need to somehow think outside the box to somehow either bring the public back to us, or make an effort to reach out to get them and meet them in the middle. I think one of the ideas that could be good is what John suggested a while ago, and I don't think we ever really did it, was have meetings out and about in town.
Well, summer.
Go to the fire department, go to NADI's, go to XYZ, and have some sort of something there so we're more visible. And I think when, if you were to come with us, I think that would be helpful. I do think, you know, your visibility on things like Memorial Day and Veterans Day and that sort of thing is not even in question. You're always, you always show up. So my grade wasn't reflective of effort or transparency. It was more of a connectivity issue with the public, which I believe in my comments, I lumped all of us in on that. It wasn't just reflective on you. And I don't really have any quick way to solve it either. So I can appreciate where you're coming from and trying to say, hey, what can I do better? I don't really have an answer. I think we could all collectively try to do it together, which I think would be more constructive. But that's kind of what I thought. It wasn't transparency. It wasn't an honesty issue. It was more of a connectivity.
I think no matter what we do, there's always going to be, unfortunately, there's always going to be a level of mistrust. I mean, just with government in general, whether it's, whether it's at the top, whether it's at your municipal level, there's always going to be that inherent mistrust, unfortunately. And I think we do a good job of trying to be as transparent as we absolutely can be. You know, whether, like you say, Cody's Corner, Halifax, you know, we've taken initiative to try to get the information out there. And I, I don't know. I think we're doing a very fine job. I'm proud of this board. I'm proud of the work that Cody and Pam do. I mean, but to Tom's point, if we want to try to think outside the box, and get our faces out more in the public, I don't think that could hurt.
I think, I think Tom raises a good point. I don't, I don't think it's a criticism of Cody at all. I don't think it's his issue directly. I think, I think I agree 100% that for whatever reason, the times now seem to have a real mistrust of government at every level, from, from the very lowest level, which is where I think we are, all the way up to the very highest level. And I don't, I don't know, it seems to be a societal attitude. I don't know how to connect better with our constituents. It's, it's, that is something that befuddles me at this point. I don't really know how to do that. Because I don't, I really don't see, and I haven't seen, since, since I've been back on this board now two and a half years, I haven't seen anything that would cause a reasonable person to think that there was some sort of shenanigan going on. I just don't see it. I mean, if it's there, I'm blind to it, but I don't see it. And I don't see it anywhere in the government. I mean, the police department, fire department, highway department. Everybody has a criticism of some sort, but, I mean, I don't, I don't know why there's so much distrust to that. And, you know, we saw it at some of our public hearings recently. So I agree with you. I think that's an issue. I think it's a terrible black mark, but not just on us, I don't think.
Yeah, it's everywhere.
It's like, it's everywhere. And we should figure out a way to do better. We did do, so two years ago?
Yeah.
We did do some road shows over the summer. I thought they were helpful. We should have done it this summer. I dropped the ball. I shouldn't.
I dropped the ball, too.
Well, part of it was, you know, when I reached out to departments, there was a lack of desire to host us. The only place that really, a lot you were able to was the library or the fire department, which we absolutely could have still done that. But it was just a lack of, you know, see a way. We weren't even able to do it there because of that. As far as other places in the community, I don't know where we would do it, outside of town facilities. That gets tricky. But again.
But not just done that, though. I mean, the concept is you bring, you bring the board to the people, not that we go someplace and then tell people to come to us.
Yeah, right, right.
We don't want, that, that doesn't work. But, but what the idea was with the road shows was exactly that. We did run into some logistical problems. Like, we wanted, I wanted to do it down at the recycling center, because I thought that needed a little bit more. But then the logistics of it were just not going to work.
Yeah.
We really wanted to do the council on aging, but there's no facility. So it was, they came to the town hall and they talked to us. Same with the police department. Like, their facility doesn't really lend itself to, to that.
Think of the Margaret Mayer amphitheater, maybe, this summer. That'd be fun. To an outdoor meeting.
It's possible. Yeah, I mean, it's possible. But again, remember, if you, if you remember, the one we were going to, the day we were going to do the council on aging two years ago?
Yeah.
What, no, tomorrow? Even though they had a tent out there, it still isn't going to work.
No.
So I agree with Tom. I think, I think that is an issue that is, a board issue, really. I mean, I do, I do think Cody tries him what he can, and then he's, he's right. He can only do what we tell him to do, right?
Yeah. And like I said, in my, in my synopsis, I don't think it's reflective of effort. And I don't, and I don't put him alone on it either. I kind of put us on it as well. And I don't think it's a transparency thing. I think it's just some sort of disconnect. And that would be the, literally the only thing that I think could be better somehow. And I don't think he's alone in trying to find a solution, which I also agree.
Okay. So, I mean, so again, I strive to provide the best service I can to Halifax, so maybe we can put this on upcoming agendas. Because I'm not content with just a score like that and then no solution. So I'd like to come up with, not saying we have a solution tonight, but I don't want to be in the same spot in a year and get a score where we haven't, we've identified a problem, and we haven't made an effort to make a solution. I thought I had been making the efforts, and I think we have, but it clearly hasn't been enough. So I want to make sure that we're, we're continuing to progress in that category. So.
Do we want to, do we want to make it an ongoing agenda item? Do we want to, what does the board want to do?
I don't know if you need it ongoing. Maybe we check in quarterly or something, or if there's ideas. I mean, again, I'm always available if any of the board members have ideas.
I'm not sure what, I mean, to think about that. I guess, I got, thank you, Tom, for bringing it up, actually, because maybe really haven't thought about it much for two years. In terms of, in terms of that, I guess, I mean, you two guys have a little bit better ability in that regard, just because of your life situations, right? So you're, you're in the schools, you're, you know, that kind of thing. So you're kind of with the people a little bit more that way. My demographic's a little bit older.
No, not that much older. But I, but I see what Cody's saying. I get that. You don't want to be ding. He doesn't want to be dinged for.
Well, I'm not sure it's a ding. I mean.
Well, it's my performance evaluation.
Well, if you felt, if you feel ding, they're slighted. I, you know, that certainly wasn't the intention.
No, no. Again, I think the idea of this evaluation isn't, isn't just so, I get a rating, but it's really so I, I know where I stand and where I can improve. I can always improve. So it's good to have these things identified. But at the end of the day, it's, it is, it's, you know, you guys filling out an evaluation of me. And if it's a feeling that I can do better there, then that's something I'll strive to do over the next year, or before the next year. But hopefully a better rating next time this year.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda, on the evaluation? Let's go to the model host community agreement for elevated roots.
Yes. So you may recall, we had a similar situation with Flower and Soul. We entered into state law refires that we have a marijuana host community agreement with any marijuana business in town. So we initially executed these host community agreements with them. The state had since changed the law that required, host community agreements are now reviewed by the Cannabis Control Commission, and they also are not, you're not allowed to have the community impact fee of 3%, which we had previously. So this is a template agreement. This matches exactly what you had previously approved for Flower and Soul. The only thing that really changes of substance is the, no longer the 3% impact fee, that's removed. We still get the 3% local tax. We kept the expiration date the same. So it was, their expiration date was five, five years from the date of commencement. Their date of commencement was November, let's see, November of '22, I believe it was. So this expires.
'27?
Yeah, 2027. So again, it really just makes it so we're, we're both in compliance with the state law, and they can submit this to the Cannabis Control Commission for, for their license renewal, which is up right now.
Any questions?
No, it seems like we're just continuing on what was existing, but being up to compliance with the Cannabis Commission as far as the impact.
Do we have a legal counsel involved in this at all?
Yeah, Attorney Huxman was involved.
And so he's all, he's fine with everything that's in this new contract?
He is, yeah. So he actually drafted the first one with Flower and Soul. It's a state, it's a template from the state. You just fill it in. And then this is exactly what Flower and Soul's was, just with elevated roots.
Okay. So what do you need, motion to?
Motion to approve and for me to sign on your behalf.
So moved. We have the second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Employment contract with Kathy Evans, public health nurse.
So this was in your packet in draft form. Our labor council did not have an opportunity to review it. So I'm going to ask that you not approve it tonight. But I do just want you to be aware of it, and we can certainly discuss it. This is through the Public Health Excellence Grant. So Bob Valerie runs, is the, Halifax is the host community of this Public Health Excellence Grant. He's come in before the board and explained it before. It's, six communities are part of this. We get a substantial amount of money from the state that fully funds it. And basically, it allows for each of the six communities to provide health, public health services above and beyond the bare minimum, the requirement. So we have a coordinator who provides services. The idea is bring, is bringing in this public health nurse, who would be a full-time employee and provide services to all six communities. Again, it doesn't cost us any money because it's funded through the state. But it's, in the contract, we're only running through the funding, which is through next fiscal year, June 30th, 2026. Like I said, the labor council hasn't reviewed it, so I'm not going to have you formally board on the contract. But we may look to have the employees start probably before your next meeting. So I'd have you approve the contract, backdate the contract. I just want to make sure you're okay with it.
Can I ask you a couple of questions? So if this person, this nurse, is a employee, full-time employee of who?
The town of Halifax.
Okay. And so does, like all these, do all these other towns contribute on any of like benefits and so on?
The state grant pays for all that. Yeah, the state grant pays for that. So what we, what we do is, the state grant provides reimbursement for the salary, well, not reimbursement, they give us the money upfront. It pays for the salary, and then we have a fringe benefit rate that we use. I believe it's around 30% right now. And then we look at if the employee takes health insurance. We charge the grant the health insurance, so on and so forth.
Okay.
And then again, they're contracted employees through the term of the funding. So they wouldn't be, we wouldn't be at a situation where we would have a employee who would ever be, reach the 10-year mark, which would allow them to be vested in the pension system. So we have no pension liability either.
That was my next question. Okay. And who is, like, the supervisor, Bob?
Bob Valerie is, yeah. So he, through the agreement we have with the state, Bob serves as the point of contact for the grant for Halifax.
Okay. And he would, like, if there was some issue, he'd be the one that, like, we would be the ones to, to hold whatever disciplinary action, assuming there was any such?
Yep. So they are, are still our employees of the town, just funded through a grant ultimately.
Okay. All right. I have another question, and I forgot.
I can ask one, John. If you need some more time. Kathy is a member of our CONCOM. So does that get sticky at all, where she's on CONCOM and would be an employee of the town?
She would need to submit, it's called a special municipal employee. So she would need to submit a form to be approved as a special municipal employee. And the appointing body, which is you on both fronts, would basically approve the special municipal employee status.
How long is she going to be a member of CONCOM?
A while.
Quite a while, yeah. And what was the vetting process in her selection? What did that look like?
Just like all of our other employees, we posted the job ad for, I think, a couple months. Several, several applicants were brought in for interviews. And then Bob and the team, as from the other communities, conducted interviews.
The other five, the other five communities?
Yes. I don't know if all of them were involved, but I know at least three of them were.
Any idea how many applicants there were?
I don't have that information. No, I can get that, though. So that's it. So really.
Oh, I know what my other question was. So given the vote on the MBTA, is this a discretionary fund also?
We're contracted for the money right now. And it's not one of the discretionary grants that we anticipate being cut in conversations with Bob. But we'll make sure there's language in the contract, like there is with the other contracted employees, where they'd be an employee at will, subject to appropriation. So all of our contracts are subject to appropriation. This money is appropriated through a grant. So for some reason, that grant, did it ever get clawed back? Then your contracts are all void, because the money's not there anymore.
Yeah, that was item B, I think, out of the termination, depletion of funds, right?
Right. And that's worth repeating. I mean, if this, this grant goes away, the town is not on the hook for this, for paying this employee.
Nope, absolutely not. No, it's, it's a good service to not only Halifax, but the other communities, particularly where we're smaller towns. other communities, particularly where we're smaller towns. We don't, so Bob's our one technical expert in the health department. So if Bob is on vacation, in most cases, we don't have a backup. Maybe we, we have a relationship with another town, we could call them. But this actually allows where if Bob's away, we have someone in place.
With people.
And then same thing with the other communities. So I think it was Rainham about a year, they were part, one of the communities in it, a year, a year and a half ago, they were without an agent completely. And through this program, they didn't lose a beat because the team stepped up and was able to provide those services to the town. It's good. Bob does an excellent job running it. He's actually a model for the state. He has presented, he presented most recently at a conference a couple of months ago on this. They like what Halifax is doing. I've been at conferences and I've been, we've been recognized kind of for what we're doing here. So it's, it's a good thing. It just, you know, there's always, you know, it's always more work in the host community. And so this, this kind of comes into a, there are employees, so the contracts go through the board, have to be approved. And also there are employees, so we own them. So God forbid there ever were a disciplinary, disciplinary action or something, that it does fall under us.
I was wondering, so this, she's a public, public health nurse, I think that's the correct term. But so she's not really Bob Valerie's, like assistant?
No, no, no.
She has her own set of responsibilities?
Yeah, yeah, completely own set of responsibilities.
And what would those, like, what does Halifax get out of that?
So there's things, different clinics that she may be able to offer. We have a system where we have to report, I think it's called Maven, where it's all of the communicable diseases have to be reported into a statewide system. So if someone, it was big during COVID. So if someone in Halifax tested positive for COVID, it was actually on the local boards of health to make sure that data was getting into the system. We still have to do that. So that's something that we're doing. We have a nurse that comes in a couple of hours a week right now, but depending on the volume, you know, it might not be getting done to the, to the level it should. Different programs, they're running a big campaign right now on, or they were running a big campaign on ticks. And they did some lessons with ticks in the kids. So they would look to do that again with the nurse. Mosquitoes, information on mosquitoes and just having someone who is in the public health profession itself and being able to give that kind of medical information. I can, I'll certainly, when we have the final contract, I can include a copy of the job description. That'll be part of the.
I'm just curious, because like this, this person, like doing flu vaccine clinics and?
No, not really. If we did that, we would bring in still like a pharmacy that is who would do those. But it would be used, like I said, in all six communities for a lot of the reporting aspects and educational as well. But again, when we have the final contract, I will include the job description as it should be part of the contract anyways.
Any other questions, anyone?
No.
Okay. So we'll table this for now. Let's see. Intermunicipal.
Do we want to, I'm sorry. Do we want to approve her pending? Because Cody, you said she might start before our next meeting?
Yeah. So I think as long as the board is fine with the backdated contract, I mean, as long as nothing stands out to you like, hey, we don't, we don't want to do this. If you, if you feel that way, I'd ask that you let me know. But we'll look to bring her on. It was really just a mix-up in myself and Jack Dolan getting this in for him to review. So he wasn't able to, and I'm not comfortable having you vote final contract.
So do you want us to take any action at all tonight?
I think as long as the three of you are on the same page and we're good with kind of bringing this person on, under the general terms of this, what's presented, I think we'll vote the final contract at the next meeting.
Okay.
But if anyone is thoroughly concerned with something, I'd ask that you let me know.
Okay.
Okay. I think I skipped over one. Intermunicipal agreement with Hanson?
Yeah. So this was, I had mentioned this previously, our building commissioner is going to help out the town of Hanson. I was supposed to have the intermunicipal agreement last week and I just received it like right now during our meeting. So I'm going to again ask you to table this one because I didn't, we didn't get it in time.
Okay. All right. And nobody has any objections to that. We'll move on to Paul Caponius?
Yes. So this is the result of, Paul Capinos, PK is the name of our assessing software and consultant. We do three-year contracts with PK. So for instance, personal property, we don't have the internal capacity to do that. So we use a consultant who provides those values. Our solar fields, that's super technical for putting a value on what that is. So we use PK, which is Paul Capinos. We also use the software, the PK software, which is like our assessing software. So part of that is we have to go out to bid every year. We went out to bid. PK was the lone bidder again for the town of Halifax, which isn't rare because it's, you typically don't change consultants here. So this would be a contract for fiscal years 25, 26, and 27. The rates align with what we would anticipate. It's what we already budgeted for the current fiscal year. And you can see, let's see, what are the rates here? The first two years are flat at $14,800 and then the last year goes to $34,100. And that's because we, that's a recertification year. So every five years, we have to go through a recertification through the Department of Revenue with our valuations. And so that, it requires more work on their end. So.
Did they, I thought that was every three years on, on the real estate tax. Isn't that how we used to do it? We do like one-third of the town every year? And on the third year, you had to have recertified all the real estate?
That's a, that's a different process.
But it's not this guy, though.
This, no, no, this is, we have to recertify the, every five, we're in a five-year, yeah, five-year cycle for, for, to be recertified. So they're continuously, anytime a building permit's pulled or anything, they're going out checking those, revaluing. And then every year we do revaluations to make sure we're, you know, sticking with market. And that's why sometimes our tax rate goes up, goes down, because the valuation is always changing. But we actually have to recertify through the Department of Revenue, which is every five years, which is why fiscal 27 is the additional $28,900. But then you're not doing the interim update every year. So that, the, what I described with all the other updates is we call the interim update. So every year we just do the updates as needed. But every five years, we have to do a full recertification, which is why it's more expensive.
But recertification of what?
Of the valuations across the town.
Of real estate?
Yes.
Because you mentioned personal property at one point.
Well, that's one of the things that the consultant does. He prepares our personal property valuations as well. But the recertification is based, is real estate.
Okay. And, but the personal property stuff is like boats and cars and stuff like that?
Yeah, yep, exactly. Does that, he does that for us annually. The solar is an example of that, depending on how, we're, like, we were negotiating, we've negotiated a couple solar pilots. PK provides us with the estimated valuations for that. If somebody takes us to ATB, the appellate, appellate tax board, we have to have prepared tax information of estimates of how we came up with these, come up, came up with this information. He assists us with that. So he's really our all-around assessing consultant in software. It's who we've used going back in recent history. And again, the only reason for this is it's, it's a three, every three years, we have to do this through a new contract required by state law that we go out to bid.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I know that in talking with Deb down in the assessor's office, she speaks highly of PK in general. And yeah, I see no reason why not. We should re-up them, especially since they were the only bidder.
We kind of have to. We have, we have to have something in place. And the Board of Assessors did meet and also recommended that the board select and approve the contract.
Okay. But you don't want us to do that tonight?
No, you can do this tonight. You can do this one tonight. The building commissioner one is the one I said, hold on.
All right. So then I will make a motion that we approve the contract with Paul S. Caponius and Associates.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Is it just one page to say?
Yeah, just the one page at the top there.
Okay. Lakeville Animal Shelter, speaking of another old problem.
Yep. So this is an annual approval. This allows us to utilize the Lakeville Animal Shelter. You don't really see many changes here. We have an annual fee of $500, which will be due July 15th, so next fiscal year. And then it's a $25 per day for the animals. And then typically the owner would pay that if, when it's released to the owner. This is the same as last year.
The $25 a day, we pay or the owner or the dog pays?
The $25 per day is payable when the animal's released to its owner. We do have to pay a $20 drop-off fee for each dog that we bring to the Lakeville Animal Shelter, which we pass off.
Pass that on, right?
Yep, yep.
This has been, we've been using Lakeville.
Been doing this forever.
Probably 15 years. We used to do it here on Aldena Road, but that caused too many troubles. Okay. Any other discussion about the contract with Lakeville? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve the same.
Second.
We have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. And town administrator update?
Yes. So.
Besides what we've already talked about?
A few things. The Council on Aging is beginning its phase three of the hybrid program. Darlene had come in maybe eight months ago and given the board an update on the hybrid program that we awarded a grant through the town of Bridgewater. We got a total of $200,000, $100,000 for Halifax, $100,000 for Bridgewater. This allows for, it's like almost a hybrid social day program where a couple of days a week, residents that are in need and qualify come into the COA and receive different learning and activities throughout the day. And then a couple of other days a week, they'll actually be hybrid. We'll set them up with the technology where they can take part in the program at home. So we have a location here in Halifax. There's a location over at the Bridgewater Council on Aging. And then there's also some remote options. So that's starting up again next week in our phase three, which will be the last phase of that. So kudos to Darlene and her staff and then the Bridgewater Council on Aging. That's been a huge success so far.
I'm going to ask you this a lot, but is that another possible grant that wouldn't happen because of the MBTA?
I believe that is a discretionary grant. So it technically could be. Luckily, we're at the tail end of it and we've expended most of those funds. But that is, it's a discretionary grant that we applied for and it was competitive. We were awarded it. So that's certainly one that could, could have been a jeopardy in the future.
Kind of try to keep a list of this because it's going to come up, but we may as well know.
Absolutely.
Buzzkill Bruno over here.
Thursday, Thursday, January 16th, we, the, all of the school committees will be hosting a meeting at the Kingston Town Hall with myself, the Kingston Town Administrator and the Plimpton Town Administrator. We invite any members of the board of selectmen interested in attending. Finance Committee, a couple of members will be there as well. Basically, it's a kickoff meeting. So I think we heard a lot of feed, well, we gave a lot of feedback as the town administrators of the process that we went through with the schools last year, that we couldn't do that again this year. And we needed to button up that process. So part of that was we've met internally and we've agreed to have this kind of kickoff meeting where we try to get everyone in the room and start talking things earlier and expectations. So that's going to start this process.
Did we do this, we did one in February last year? I remember a similar meeting.
We think we did it in like March, once they already noticed that there was a huge problem. But also that was more of like a school committee meeting than they just invited us to it.
Okay.
Where the idea of this is really.
We had one here.
We did that with just our school committee.
We had the town administrators.
Yep. But this is for all the towns. So to make sure all the towns are going in on this, the same approach. And I think it's, I think it's actually pretty successful. We're excited about it. And Halifax Elementary School will be presented, the school committee will be presented with their preliminary budget this Monday. So we'll start to get those figures in and hopefully start to plan. So again, it's trying to work with them.
Could you repeat the date?
The Thursday, the 16th at Kingston Town Hall at 6:00 PM. So if anyone's available, again, I think it'll be a productive meeting. I'll certainly.
You should provide the board an update.
We should post that.
Yeah, post it just in case. I'd like to go.
If you guys are all planning to go, we can certainly post it.
Yeah. So that'll be very good. I know a few members of the finance committee will be there. And then like I said, I think the idea is each of us town administrators plan to give an overall kind of budget synopsis of where each of our communities are and trying to work, going in on the same page. And we are, which is excellent. Because I think what's happened in years past is, you know, Halifax may be in one financial spot, but Kingston's in a different financial spot and Plimpton's in that spot. So then Halifax may be stuck as the lone wolf, right? And then it doesn't matter at the Silver Lake level because if the majority votes it, you have to follow through with it. So myself, Keith and Liz, the town administrators, Plimpton and Kingston, we have a great relationship. We're regularly meeting and that has really helped going into this.
That's good.
So that, that'll be on the 16th. Let's see, talk about the budget. Finance Committee, Department of Budget meetings start tomorrow. So we changed how we did the budget last year. The finance committee really liked meeting with departments one-on-one with myself and the town accountant. So we've done that again this year, that those meetings are starting tomorrow. And then we plan to have full Finance Committee budget meetings in February. And I think on the town side, we'll have a budget done probably first week of March, pending the school budget. So that's good. Good. We're certainly staying on top of it and then we can make changes as needed. The other thing is, I sent this out to the board, but I think it's important to mention to the community, we are part of, we procure electricity services for the town of Halifax residents. So we are not part of an aggravation. So a lot of communities team up with other communities and they go out as a conglomerate and buy electricity for their residents at kind of a bulk rate. Halifax was not part of that. And we considered when we renewed our contract last year, should we join, should we not join? But when I worked with Colonial Power and we locked in a rate of 15.178 cents per kilowatt hour, which was a significant increase from, it was a little over 10 before. But, you know, during, going back two years, electricity was almost 30 cents a kilowatt hour. And I'm happy to share that this past quarter, we saved the community as a whole $71,000. And over the past five quarters, we've saved Halifax residents $500,000 just by being part of this. And the largest aggregation in the state, which is made up of 26 cities and towns, has a rate of 15.784. And we actually have them beat with our 15.178.
Congratulations.
Which I always point out to Kathy, our energy manager, because Kathy is a big, heavily involved with that aggregation of the 26 communities. So I make sure to let her know that we actually beat them with our rate. It's not a huge difference, but.
Is this something that the citizens in town see on their electric bill?
It is, yeah. So if you look, when you get your electric bill, at the bottom, it says energy supplier. And right now, it's, I believe it's Constellation Energy. But it actually will say the name of the, but it says Constellation Energy. It should say Halifax. This is Halifax.
On the backside, it'll say Halifax.
Yeah, the bottom, Halifax.
Colonial.
Yeah, oh, Colonial, that's what it is. Colonial Power.
Check mine every month.
Yep.
There was something that they called, they said that they are often, I said, I don't know how you can get up, you know, up out. And what happens is, as long as I'm always checking my.
Yeah, make sure you're still in it.
Yeah, and I checked for our shed too, some concessions, our shed too is on it too. So I checked.
So that brings back to the point that we discussed a few minutes ago about distrust and so on. And I would like to see this kind of information better broadcast. I'm not criticizing you by any means, because I'm no good at this. But maybe the social media thing needs to have a little bit of this also, to say, look at Halifax, you know, by following these governmental, your, your local government has helped you save money on your electric bill. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with that. If that's the truth.
Yeah. We can definitely post something. You know, the social media, something, I'm working with Caesar on to condense and consolidate. The problem right now is if you look up, you name it, Halifax.
Oh, yeah. Progressives.
Yeah, Halifax fireworks committee, right? Everyone has a Facebook group and there's no way for us to regulate it. So one of the things we're working on is consolidating all, consolidating all of those, taking all of those away. And you have a town of Halifax Facebook group. Because the issue is, I hear from the residents, well, I don't know where to go to find out about holidays in Halifax or this or that, because there's so many groups. Or I don't know where to go to find out about a road closing. Is it the police department posting it? Is it the highway department posting it? Generally speaking, in towns, you have a town Facebook page and then a police and fire page. That's it.
That's it.
That's not how it's been done here. So it's a challenge to reel that in, but that is the goal. And then we can actually more effectively utilize Facebook because it's a central source. And then people actually look to that central source because it's, that's it, it's that one. one page that they can look towards, so.
I think that's great. I didn't realize you were doing that, which is an excellent thing, that's something that we, again, I think is an avenue that can be explored to, to address the issues that Tom raises particularly. Something like this is, I mean, that's, this is good news.
Yeah, we don't always get to share good news.
You're the lower bill than everybody else, so it's, you know, it's because, because your government's working for you, so we should, I mean, you do have to pat yourself on the back a little bit sometimes.
Yes, definitely. No, I think we can certainly do a better job of getting the, all the good things going on, because you hear so many of the bad, but there is a lot of good and sometimes you get wrapped up in the day-to-day, but that's just one example of it. And then the last item I have for an update is just regarding the Pine Street intersection, Pine Street and Plymouth Street. So at the last meeting, the board voted to reallocate those ARPA funds and had asked that, you know, I inquire with Steve Hayward, our highway surveyor. Steve and I were able to connect. I actually forwarded an email he had just sent me this evening to the board, I'm not sure if you had a chance to see it. But we, he, the town has not made any progress on securing the services for the study, but Steve says that the highway department did paint some stop lines on the north and south portion of Pine Streets just recently. And then he's investigating, putting in islands on each side of Pine Street that would have a stop sign in the middle on the island, and he provided a little bit of an image there. They've also put up two intersection ahead signs on Plymouth Street and they're planning to install two intersection ahead signs in each direction on Pine Street. And then also there's an upcoming traffic safety committee, which Selectman Pratt is a part of, and I've asked that it be included on their agenda to make sure that that's getting the attention that it needs. So that's, that's the update I have. At this point, I'll continue to make sure that, you know, we're trying to work with Steve and the highway department to take action up there as much as we can, but I just wanted to provide that update.
Good. Sounds great.
I have one thing, I should have asked you to put on it, but just, the board, as does every other committee and board in town, has to write an annual report. Typically, it's the job of the chairman, right? That's me, I don't mind doing it. But what I would like is if you guys, I don't know how we do this without an open meeting violation, but somehow let me know what you think we should have in that annual report, good or bad. And if you go back and look at the annual reports in the back, they're usually fairly bland, it says, you know, we did this, we did that, we did something else. But before I write it, I would like to have, you know, whatever input you guys might want to have on that, and of course I'll give you the draft, make our final after that, so. And I think Pam, I have to have it done by...
21st of, like anybody else, 21st of January.
So if you, if you want to draft, if we, we can work to draft something, John, and then we'll have it on the agenda for the 21st for the board to review and then to provide comments. I think Pam will give us a little bit of leeway for you to...
I think, I think, what was it called, PAS?
Yeah.
It's, I say it's a tough deadline, but I get them trickled and I still have a bunch that I still have to do, but not that I have to, they have to get, but as they come in, I just format it and then I plug it into the paginated part.
Right.
It's like second...
Well, we should send it.
It's a second thing.
I thought, I thought I was doing February, so my apologies.
It's not, because we have to figure out how we're going to do the printing and where we're going to do the printing and all that type of stuff too, so we'll get that.
So do you want contributions from us, or do you want us to let you and Cody put the draft together and then bring it to us?
I would like to get whatever you guys have, if you've got something on your mind.
Should we send it to Cody and then individually?
That's where I...
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Send it to Cody.
I mean, you, you think you're fine with the open meeting law, because you're not expressing opinions, you're just stating things...
Highlighting things.